Cindy, would you like to say the one again? I'm sorry.
Acme, five, two, academy string.
Thank you. What cap?
No, just the A. The A is the only thing capped.
Acme. That's just the name of the thing on there. I think that's the best. Just that's capitalized. Your security here?
Perhaps not.
Thank you, Cindy. I couldn't use it, so this is.
I had a business a long time ago.
Who is it?
I need to use the acme five, two.
Five, two?
G. We get started?
Yeah.
Okay. So seven o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order and note that this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. With the annual notice advertised in the January 11th, 2021 Trenton Times. Notice was provided to the Hunterdon County Democrat and the Trenton Times. Members on the list serve to department heads, the city attorney, the city engineer. And the meeting agenda was posted on the bulletin board at City Hall and to the website at www.lambertville nj dot org. Shall we have a roll call? Councilwoman Lambert.
Here.
Councilman Sanders.
Here.
Councilman Stigman.
Here.
Council President Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Fall is away. Okay. Let's allegiance and please continue standing after the pledge.
Let's allegiance, so good flag of the United States of America. And the true republic of which expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yes, for y'all to remain standing in honor of those serving in the United States Armed Forces in country and abroad. And for those serving on the front lines of COVID-19. Thank you. Okay, moving on to meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes? No? Can I get a motion to approve the June 4th, 2021 voting session and July 6th, 2021 voting session minutes? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You all right over there?
I'm good, Ward. Thanks for just waking me up a little.
You can turn me down if you need to.
Okay, we have a few resolutions on the consent agenda. Does anybody have questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I just have a question about the first one, 102, 2021. The timing on that, just so I understand, it said the documents for the 2019 Roan projects grant. So does that mean we got the grant?
Yes.
What's, is that mean we received? This wide for the grant 2019, we got it and now we're going to spend it?
That's correct. Okay, all right. And we have to move this forward. It has to be done within this calendar year.
Okay, but I thought that's what it was. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
You have a questions? Here you're done. Can we get a motion to approve resolutions number 102, 2021 through 110, 2021? Minus 109. Oh, thank you, minus 109.
Thank you. I'm not making a motion.
Second. You can do a voice goes on that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next up we have the bills list. Questions or comments on the bills list? Be right along. I have a motion to approve the bills list as presented. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Much better. Yeah, no, I fixed it on this end.
Okay, we have no ordinance, ordinance of the first reading right now. Second reading is the cannabis ordinance. Ward, I think, or Councilman Sanders, pardon me, I think you wanted to say a few words?
Yeah, I could just take three minutes. I can't see who's in the audience, but just to make sure that folks are oriented to what we're doing here. I'll just take a couple minutes. So the city created the Lambertville Cannabis Work Group. Number volunteers, they were established to assist the this body and the planning board. In responding to important decisions, the city has to take action to enact of the state legislation legalizing cannabis. The most time sensitive of those decisions is where the city wants to permit or not permit. Any or all of the six kinds of cannabis businesses that are defined and outlined in the state law. And whether we want to operate in our community. So the work group worked diligently to help inform that decision making. I do want to thank the volunteers and Steve, the council. Stigman was part of that. Appreciate everyone's efforts here. They were not tasked with providing policy recommendations. It was really just to develop educational materials and to solicit input. On the educational materials, the group put together a good slide deck. And information on the city's website. So you can all read that on the city's website. There's a page, I believe, for this issue of cannabis. That background information, the slide deck was presented to actually now three public forums. To help orient folks as to the, you know, what's, what we need to do and what the, what the law provides for. We also, that group was in charge of trying to solicit input. And most of what it was hoping to do here, we, we had three public hearings, one on June 17th. Was a public forum and the first one was by, was in, if I remember correctly, there was one a week later on June 23rd, which was held in person. At both of those, there was, the slide deck was presented and then it was an opportunity for public comment. And we had fair, we had good responses, the attendance at both of those events. My recollection is we had like between 30 and 40 people probably at both of those. And folks provided the, you know, quite a few comments and we learned a lot about what folks preferences were. About aspects of the wall, we had some subject matter experts. It was really helpful. And then recently we had one that was really targeted to Lambertville's business community. So they may not residents, but they're a key and valued part of our community. We wanted to make sure that there was a forum for them to, to provide. Educated, that can also provide background. So that was held. In the July 20. No, it was not July. I can't quite remember. Something two weeks ago. And we had a pretty good attendance. It was noticed through the. The local chamber. We got a number of people who were listening in, a number of people who provided comments. We've used Lambertville Matters to get the word out. The press has picked up quite a few articles on Lambertville's efforts here. And we also had a website, I'm sorry, not a website, a email address for folks to share their thoughts and observations for those who could. Attend the public hearings. So a couple things came out of that. I'm starting to, longer than I anticipated here. But one, there was, there was pre broad support for cannabis businesses. I think the second finding was that there was a focus that people had on retail to encourage retail operations in the city. Third, a preference for small businesses. Fourth, that there were appropriate restrictions on these businesses, you know, in terms of hours and location and number and so forth. And there were concerns that were raised too. I think parking and traffic were two that, that came up. Those can be both good things and bad things for downtown. Sort of like Goldilocks here, you want to make sure the porridge isn't too hot or too cold. That is just right, but the, the traffic and parking. There's a potential that that could give concern. Some folks raised that. So with that information, the city proposed a first reading, an ordinance and key attributes of that are. Let's go through that very quickly. One is that it would, I think it's a pretty conservative approach. Of the six kinds of businesses, we only dispersed blush be allowing only retail. We would permit to the central business district, one in C2, if you want in C3. So there is, there's a preference that at least two of the four. Businesses be micro businesses and that's a defined term in state law. And it's, it relates to the size of the business number of employees. It has a requirement that the employees be residents. Couple of attributes of a, of a, of a micro business. Controls around signage, police access to surveillance cameras, which is probably required by, anyway. A restriction of 500 feet from the LPS. It would not be permitted in single family dwellings or townhouses. It would impose a 2% tax. On the retail sales, which is who goes to city. And no consumption areas, the law does permit. If the cities want to allow indoor and outdoor consumption areas for now, we wanted to, to wait and learn more about that. I think the goal of this body, I think others, is that this is an iterative process. We're going to learn more when the state develops regulations. We may very well maybe go back and modify what we're doing here based on what the state does. We're going to continue to look at the other five types of businesses. And this is a learning and growing process. And so this first. Attempt at this is not the last word on where we end up with all aspects of this. But we do have a deadline of August 22nd. If you don't act and approve an ordinance by then, then all forms of cannabis businesses will be committed. In your, your city and without restriction. So happy to answer the questions that folks may have, and I know it's, this is up for public hearing tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Sanders. Cindy, would you mind reading the ordinance into the record? Sure. So we'll read it by title into the record. It's an ordinance of the city of Lambertville and the county of Hunterdon in the state of New Jersey. Creating chapter 16 of the Lambertville City Code 2014 entitled cannabis. And amending the land use regulations to permit the operation of class five cannabis retailer license without consumption area. And prohibiting classes one, two, three, four, and six of cannabis licensed establishments within the city. And amending chapter 15 to establish a cannabis transfer tax. Thank you. Does anybody on council have any questions or comments before we open to the public?
I think, Ward, you, you may have missed this, that this went in front of the planning board to make sure it was in sync with the master plan. Ward?
Yeah, that's correct. On July 2nd, it went before the planning board for, for that consideration. And the board, if I remember correctly, it's not, voted unanimously to find that it was in accordance with the master plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll open up to the public for any public comment? Oh, it's vote, sorry. Can we please vote to open the public hearing? There are no motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we don't have public comment if anybody has any. Please mark, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Christopher Tenev, T E N E V. I live at 43 Bridge Street, apartment two. You're not Mike today, so if you could just speak up a little bit, I did notice. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I can hear you.
Good, that's good. I'm going to speak from some notes on my phone if you don't mind. So I'm an artist and an electrical engineer. I've lived in Lambertville for two years now. And I've been a medical marijuana patient in New Jersey for five years. Cannabis has improved my quality of life and has been a critical part of my ability to control my condition. Especially since I joined New Jersey's program. And eliminated my dependence on black market, market products that were inconsistent in quality, type and availability. Legalization of cannabis through the New Jersey Medical Marijuana Program has allowed me to consistently access the exact type of medicine that I need for my condition. And virtually whenever I need it. I'm grateful that our state and our city have taken steps to legalize cannabis and expand access to the plant to even more people. And this is not to mention, of course, eliminating legal inequities associated with the prosecution of cannabis related offenses. I thank and applaud the residents of our city and the city council for their contributions to these efforts here in Lambertville. I do want to take a moment to encourage the council to take action to institute sooner rather than later. Consumption lounges in our city. This will allow our city to increase revenue associated with cannabis legalization. Not just from the taxation of cannabis itself, but from increased tourism in general, as people come to spend the day in our city. Rather than just the few minutes it takes to visit a cannabis retailer. It would also provide areas for consumption to residents who may be unable to use cannabis at home due to, you know, lease restrictions. And this would ensure greater equality of cannabis access in our city. But most importantly, I think taking the step to institute consumption areas will help to foster a healthy culture of cannabis use in our city. Rather than forcing cannabis, I'm sorry, rather than forcing residents to hide their cannabis consumption at home. Alone or wherever they can find a place away from others who may be skeptical. We should encourage a culture of responsible, adult oriented self-awareness and social interaction. That reflects the overwhelming opinion of our residents that cannabis should be legalized and not stigmatized. I encourage the council to continue the great work they've done so far. In formally implementing the will of the residents of New Jersey and especially of Lambertville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as we're going to the next presenter, I, I do, the gentleman reminded me that there were a lot of folks that testified. As people who are eligible for medicinal marijuana. And the, the distance to travel and access was, it was something that surprised me. The testimony, the number of folks that testified for that as one of the reasons for wanting to support it. So I did want to note that that is clearly a finding of the, of the work group because we heard from so many people about that issue.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Peter Page. I live at 112 Swan Street. I participated in both of the sessions prior to this. The finished document, to me. Conveys kind of a grudging acceptance of the cannabis business. Like particularly, I read through, I've read through this a bit. The hours, you know, the businesses in the central business district are listed, are limited to nine to seven. Monday through Saturday and five on Sunday. I know that both of the places and both liquor stores in town, one's open late, one's open nine tonight. And I think they both stay open later on the weekends. So I don't even know if they have any kind of legally set hours. Just so, I'm curious, like, why is that? There's, there's what I consider kind of a strange mention in here. People are not permitted to congregate outside of the business. Which I guess is written in anticipation of possibly the early days when people might be lining up. I don't, I don't get why the business is held responsible for that. And there's this strange, the dictionary says, you know, they should have a plan for this. I eat numbers are given and customers wait in their car, in their vehicles until Paul. I think a business that would attract an overflow number of people. Would be welcome and those people would be welcome, you know, in our town to do something other constructive, spend their money at other businesses while they wait. There's some pretty onerous security requirements in here, some of which I think are probably required by state law. So, you know, I gave that, so you have to have 24/7 surveillance. There must be what's called a secure location for, you know, storing the bulk of the product, only a minimum product in any customer service area. Like, I don't know, jewelry stores have to, you know, face these kind of requirements? They have to have security people, they're trained security. There's all these security requirements. What's everybody afraid of? Like, what are we, what are we trying to prevent from happening in there that we think is likely? And is any other business in town face these same kind of requirements? I don't think the banks, the bank branches in town have trained security typically inside. So if that's required in state law, then so be it. But I don't see why this, why, you know, the town would require that. The limits, the signage limits seem really strict to me. If I read this correctly, you're only basically allowed to have the name of the business. You know, Acme Cannabis Shop.
I'm sorry, your, your three minutes, if you could wrap up, but we can give Councilman Sanders a chance to respond. Some of this is required by state law.
Okay, well, I can leave that, I can leave my three minutes there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Sanders, would you like to respond to any of that?
Yes, sorry, I was trying to find my new button. You know, I appreciate the, the comments and. So a couple things. Number one, the notion of surveillance, as Council President noted, is required by state law. So if you look at the cannabis statute, if the state law requires private outdoor video surveillance cameras, cameras. And another of other elements, I have off my fingertips. So that was an element that was, I think, in some ways was stating what the state requires were. On the, on the congregation issue. You know, we have a concern. That, and it may turn out to be unfounded and we'll, we'll see. But if you look at states where there is a border close by and something is permitted in one state but not another. There's a danger of too much, you know, a lot of people coming and congregate. There's a reason there was a lot of tobacco stores right along the Pennsylvania border, right across the river from the Delaware River, New Jersey. Because we have higher tobacco taxes. When you cross into Tennessee, you know, they allow fireworks. There's fireworks stands up there. One of the things that we fear in this process is that as a, you know, we don't control the state does, the number of statewide licenses that will be allowed. If we are, if a business in town is granted one and the surrounding areas are not. Even if they are, but as a border city, there's a danger that you get too much traffic. So if you have a long line of 50 people out in front of the store blocking other stores. I, I, you know, we, we feared that, that too much traffic could be a problem. So, and, and from what we learned from other, talking to subject matter experts who, you know, look at this in other states. There can be, you know, too much traffic. Again, the right traffic is, you know, a good amount of traffic is good. It's good for our parking meters, it's good for other businesses. But if you have 100 people waiting to get into a store, it, it's not a great look and could frustrate other businesses. That was the thinking. It may turn out that it's for not, and it's not necessary, but that was the, I think, the thinking. On the hours, I think it's, the state specifically permits cities to have an hours limitation. You know, from what I've heard, there's, there's probably going to continue to be for quite some time, a shortage of, of product. Because it's going to take a while for entities to do so. I know the, the hours, I think, you know, long hours, that, that may be. You know, unnecessary based on the volume that they have actually to sell. We also did look into the liquor store hours and, you know, there was some approximation. I think we started earlier in the liquor stores. We did want folks to be able to come home from work if they're working a sort of nine to five job to be able to, to purchase and also some big items. So it may not be perfect, but we were, that's sort of the engine behind hours, the congregation issue and the surveillance issue.
Thank you. And just to reiterate what we've said, you know, we want to get something on the books in time for the deadline with the acknowledgement that it's not going to be perfect down the gate. We will come back and consider how things go, especially once we have the regulations in place from the state.
Judy?
Thank you. Judy Gleason, 86 North Union Street. I just, I have two things. One, when I was involved with the hearing, when I came to one of the hearings. I, I was asked what my thought was about hours because I was saying we needed to get details done. At that time I said, I don't know, seven o'clock maybe. I think I was not correct on that. I think I would have been wiser to just align with liquor stores. So as a commenter who had said seven, I realized that was probably not the way to look at this. So I'm sort of backing away from that seven o'clock that I had set on the spur. My second thing is I would, I would ask that the council might give some more information about their thinking on a preference for micro business. Create some legislative history on what the thinking was on that. Because I can foresee circumstances which may happen where. A micro business is seeking permission, is not succeeding. And they're looking for some record that lets them say that council was thinking about this without just the word preference. So, so if council could give any understanding further. As what I'm calling legislative history, which is what it would essentially be, what the thinking was in terms of preference. It will be helpful going forward should that become an issue with one guy or one micro business who's trying to get in and can't. Get past just a general word like preference, which has on its face no actual legal weight. So. That was the other thing that I wanted to ask you guys to think about. And otherwise, thank you for all you're doing.
I, I think, I'll speak to that quickly and I may be wrong, so if Councilman Sanders, correct me. I think the issue with the word preference is that if we said something like shall and we didn't have the number of applicants, then we're sort of stuck. So we want to put in the law that that is indeed our preference to support those micro businesses that are coming from town. But make sure that we're not limited in acting if we don't get the, you know, if we don't get the right number of micro businesses who are able to take the licenses. Councilman Sanders, anything you want to add or crack there?
Yeah, well, a couple points. I appreciate those, these are some of the comments. So, so first on the notion of why a preference, why, why do we care? You know, this is a town that is largely CBS and gas stations. We don't really have chain stores. It is all, you know, private or small business owners. It's the local feel of our town. And we thought that that was important to try to continue that. You know, your, your point is well taken that we could, you know, this is a very heavily regulated process in the industry. I do scratch my head and wonder how micro businesses, you know, that may not be well capitalized or, you know, this is, this is hard for a monopop shop to, to pull some of this off, I think. But, you know, we, we certainly have a hope that, that the local feel of any businesses that come to town. Have that local, local character, hopefully local appointment. The, the idea of a preference two is a concept that is not, the word preference is used in the state statute. When it's talking about the, you know, the, the power preferences for licensing. The licensure though, just to be very clear, is done at the state level. You know, when they, when entities go, they will note that we've allowed four licenses in total. And that two, we were, at least two, we hope to be. Small businesses, to micro businesses. So that was the. So, that was the, you know, we may need to play, you know, I'll grant that, we may play around a little bit with this language as we move forward to make sure that it's not clear. And, you know, I'm such that there's, there's a valid point is when you're awarding licensure of contracts, that tends to be where there is disputes. So, I want us to be appropriately drawn into those kinds of disputes. Even the licensure is now at the state level, we want to make sure this is clear. We couldn't change this right now without being subsequently changed and changing the process. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a valid point. We are, something that we are taking a clearer, sort of another look at, and, and, you know, so I think that hopefully answers the questions.
Thank you for the clarification that you have put in the record in this conversation. Appreciate that.
Yep.
I could just add something before the, excuse me, before the next, you know, this, this question has come up. I've fielded a couple of phone calls about what was the intent and public was concerned about the intent not being shall instead of may. So, rather than change this current ordinance that we put forward, which would have taken us frightfully close to the deadline, we talked about, we're going to be back here again when the state regs came, come out, and we'll, we'll consider amending what we are putting through. Because there was a very strong public input about wanting, wanting us to make sure that we weren't opening the door to a larger entity over a local business. So, that's why we're here with those preference word, that this, this thing, so.
And, that's a really good point, see, and one other quick point in this too is that, you know, unfortunately, the law buckets entities into microbusiness and non-microbusiness. You know, we could have just said all microbusinesses, but there are entities that are going to, it's a tough requirement to meet the definition of a microbusiness. So, you can have essentially a small entity, they only have 12 employees or some footprint, and it just don't meet the definition of a microbusiness. But they're not, you know, you know, pot pink, you know, international company. So, it was hard to, we didn't want to elbow out those smaller to midsize companies either. So, that was part of the thinking here, and I just, I wanted, you know, so Judy's put it in the record here is that, that I mean, some of the thinking as to why we didn't have all microbusinesses.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dana Ferreri, 112 Swan Street. So, there were three, three things in particular in the ordinance. They've been brought up already, the hours, the consumption areas, and the waiting in line. And I understand Councilman Sanders has addressed the, a couple of these already. And I just want to bring up that if we're putting additional restrictions on cannabis that are not on alcohol, that we, as a city, are sort of, we're perpetuating stigma, perpetuating negative stereotypes. So, I just think that's something we need to consider, and I think the rest has been set by the other speakers.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessie Marie Villers, 13 Lambert Lane. I've been a medical marijuana patient for seven years. I'm an aspiring cannabis microbusiness applicant here from Lambertville. Just mostly coming up to praise you all for all the work that you've done this summer to get this ordinance on paper. I think you've done an incredible job. I commend the cannabis working committee, commend everyone in the public who's commented and participated in this process. I think Lambertville is really leading the way for other towns. You've really taken the public input very seriously, and you've moved forward with cannabis, pro-cannabis ordinance. So, I really wanted to commend you for that, and I really respect the way that you did it. I do hope that moving forward, it's going to be a continuing conversation. I know it's not a perfect ordinance, no one expected a perfect ordinance. The short amount of time that we were given and the lack of, like, regulatory input from the cannabis regulatory committee, so I really appreciate all that you've been able to put together. And I hope in the future, as this conversation continues, you continue taking public input, you continue taking input from the local businesses. I do think it's really essential to allow for consumption lounges in town, especially considering the number of renters we have, and also the fact that we live across the river from a state where it's not needed to consume, or bring it back to people who purchase it who don't live in this state or need to consume it in this state. And so, there are just some issues with not having places for people to be able to safely consume. And I think as cannabis businesses become more normalized and less stigmatized, we'll be able to move forward in a way that regulates them more like maybe a liquor store or a bar would be. I also think it's important to consider adding in the other types of licenses, particularly manufacturing licenses, because there are other ways to consume cannabis. I'm an edible baker, and so I hope that at some point in the future I'll be able to use, if I'm, if I'm able, if I'm granted a license by the state, I'm able to then hopefully do manufacturing in Lambertville here and be able to make my own edibles here, because it's a healthier way to consume cannabis and it's something that I'm passionate about. But being able to apply for a microbusiness retail license this year, I commend you and thank you. I think you all have done an incredible job, so thank you.
Just as the next person's coming up, but just in the consumption areas and manufacturing, one of those things that we feel like we need more information on is odor control. In this way, you know, cannabis is materially different than alcohol. We've certainly read about problems in other areas. It's one thing if you had a rural, rural area where you're manufacturing, you're growing, and the odor is not, you know, sort of right on top of people. We're a pretty small dense town, and one of the concerns is that we've jumped ahead and allowed, you know, certain other types of businesses that we could have, or consumption areas, that you could have an odor problem. And again, it's something we wanted to continue to take publicly put on, learn from experts, so we can see, you know, how that, you know, how we could control that so we wouldn't bother other people. I grew up fairly close to Hershey, Pennsylvania, and you just, you can smell chocolate everywhere you go, this used to be able to. We certainly heard from the folks in South Town around the sewage plant, you know, odor can be pretty noxious. So, um, so again, it's something that we, we want to learn more about as we move forward. We can consider other experiences.
Any other public comment?
Judy, may I, I do applaud the council in terms of that.
So, I named an address for the record?
Yes, 33 Ferry Street, Kevin Burns, D Y R N E S. I submitted a letter, I'm not going to rehash what's in the letter. My, my question is, has the city council considered the problem of the applications being limited to people who own buildings with four parking, minimum of four parking slots? Because that would greatly restrict, we have to have zoning approval before we submit an application. And according to this ordinance, the only way we're going to get zoning approval is if the applicant owns a building with four slots. So, that's going to be a problem because that closes it to almost everybody in the city except building owners with four slots. So, it's going to be building owners with four slots competing against building owners with four slots, because those are the only ones who are going to get zoning approval, and indeed zoning approval as a condition to submitting the application. So, I, I included language in there about good faith. I think that's actually more effective. The reason I say it is because in event there's any disputes regarding parking or traffic, the way the ordinance is drafted, the, the owner of the license can go to court and say, I have my four slots, I'm done. Or if we have a good faith requirement, they can't do that. You have a good faith requirement, at that point in time, the, the city will be working with the licensees. Additionally, if you have a good faith requirement, you open it up to the entire, to the entire city. The whole purpose of the legislation is to encourage minority and, and women as well as, as well as veteran, disabled submitting the application process. I'm not sure how many of those people, like, group owns a building with four slots. Now, the sad irony is people in Flemington, that they own a building with four slots. They can apply for a license, for a Lambertville license, because you only need 51%. People in Lambertville who do not own a building with slots, locked out of the process. So, what I'm suggesting here is it's a problem. I've talked to people in the, in the A C L U, it's a problem. They're monitoring this very, very carefully, because what we basically have done is frozen in the politically, existing political establishment. Whoever owns the four slots, they get to apply, the four-spot club will be competing against the four-spot club unless the ordinance is amended. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Sanders, do you have any comment, or should we move on?
Yeah, just one quick comment, and this may not be clear from the ordinance, but the ordinance has the same parking requirement as any other retail store in the city. So, it's not creating a, a different, higher standard for cannabis retailers. You know, I think it may have been some intersection that we had changed the parking requirements to make it more stringent, but that's not what we're doing here. It just, it is just clarifying that it is consistent with, you know, with any retail store that is operating in the city.
May I respond?
Yes.
The, the difference is, is that here you have to have pre-approval zoning. You can't, there you can apply for a waiver if you have the business. Here, you can't apply for the waiver. You have to actually have the zoning as a condition for applying the license. So, it's very, very different. The analogy simply doesn't hold up. Because that's what one of the real estate agents said, get a waiver. I said, I can't. Well, you have, you have to have the approval prior to submitting the application. So, it's not the same thing. You have limited it to the, to people who own four slots. So, it's different. Many, many, most of the businesses. And what's particularly egregious about this is that the rule's not even being enforced. Flaws are being waived, and so now you're using a rule that's being, that's, that allows for a waiver that's not even being enforced to block who? Women, minorities, disabled veterans. These are the people. We have to open up access to these people, and the four-spot clubs just simply is not going to do it. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm telling the, the city council, I'm a lawyer, I would anticipate that there would be action. The other problem is, I'm not even sure the commission would grant the license if we're limiting it to the, to the, to the, to the four parking slot club. Because they would know that you're blocking the access. They would know that you're limiting it to the people who already own Flemington stock. They could be outside of Lambertville, they have the preference. And the other thing is, I looked into it, you can't even buy or lease four slots in Lambertville. So, you can't even join the club. You're a woman, a woman minority, asking me to look into it, right then? Can't even join the club. So, what I'm saying is that the certainty is, I don't see how the commission grants any licenses for Lambertville, unless that's clarified. Thank you.
Mr. Burns, we do have your letter, and it's, we will, there has been a dialogue. We will certainly talk to our council or our planner about the issues you raised. And I appreciate you writing it. It's certainly not the intention at all of trying to, you know, say, prohibit women-owned businesses to have parking mechanisms. It's not, it's not an ethical. The goal is to say that they, to clarify it was consistent with the regulations on parking requirements. But we'll, we'll take that into consideration, and I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note, I mean, it's certainly something we should look into, but more broadly, we're looking at central businesses, just zoning across the board. So, the, the parking standards is something that will be included in that across the board. I, I'm a city planner by training. I'm a fan of reducing or elevating parking standards, but I'm just going first. Any other public comment?
I'm Carol Cronhon, and I live at 43 Delavan Street, and I've lived in Lambertville for more than 30 years. I have a few problems. I know I'm swimming against the stream when coming to the G M meetings, but I've talked to Councilman Stagman. But I worked for the state for many, many years, and I don't know how we decide we're in on a program before the state board even meets, before they make rules, before they do anything. When if we didn't go in on it now and we waited, we could always jump in afterwards, as from what I understand from the legislation. Because you have no idea what the state of New Jersey is going to do or put in these rules. So, for me, that's troubling, because I worked for the state for a long time, and I appreciate how things can really go south very quickly when they're involved. My other problems would be, Bill, I support medical marijuana, I, I'm fine with the whole concept, but one of my biggest problems is, I don't see how Lambertville and our residents have been adversely disproportionately harmed by the war on drugs. We're talking about, you know, minorities and social justice, and it's all about location, location, location. So, if we open four medical marijuana dispensers, where is every Pennsylvanian going to go? Here? Or are they going to, any of them going to give Trenton a shot? You know, Trenton has been very, very, very badly affected by the war on drugs. Is it going to be, are they going to decide to go to Trenton, which is having the highest number of shootings they've had in their history right now? Literally, as Steve knows, we both were in downtown Trenton for decades, decades, working to try to make, and department that tried, spent its time trying to make Trenton a better place. Lambertville is a great place now. We already have an abundance of, of benefits and, and good vibe in town, good feel. And I'm all for, you know, delivering people's products here and other things, but really, I, I just don't see how Lambertville, if I worked for the state and I'm still on some state boards, but if I were on that state board, I wouldn't grant Lambertville license. I would give them to cities that have been adversely impacted. And I think you could even argue that Flemington has been much more down on its heels than Lambertville. But basically, Hunter County has not had the repercussions that other parts of the state. If you've been to Camden, if you've been to Patterson, if you've been to Atlantic City, where yesterday's paper talked about a large chain pushing out the people who fronted the application for microbusiness, and then they pushed them out of the business. It was in yesterday's Star Ledger. I mean, these are the things that I oppose to. I don't like chains. I don't think we should have four stores if there's only two liquor stores. I also think every state that is dumb, like Colorado, they didn't reap the amount of money they thought they would. And since we're going to have so many Pennsylvanians and you can't test for, there's no reliable driving test for marijuana, I think you're going to find that the state, our, our police are going to be in court a lot, they're going to be making a lot of tickets, and we'll probably need more officers, and that's just going to add to the cost. I don't think, even if you make a million dollars, 2% is $20,000. If four places make a million dollars each, it's $80,000. That doesn't cover an officer at that expense. So, looking at it from a homeowner's point of view, I just don't see it. I, I would rather we wait, see what the state does, and then make our move if it works out. Thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And can I?
Motion to adopt.
Yes. Can I give a motion to adopt on second reading? Who could reread the whole thing again? Get a motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading, so moved.
Second.
Go on, please, with me.
Councilwoman Lambert?
Yes.
Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stagman?
Yes.
Council President?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, if I might add, what, what is the next step on something like this? I think that's probably going through both minds as well as my own.
So, yes, it's a good question, and Ms. Crime's comments are, they are well taken. I don't know why the legislature wrote the law as it did, but it required city decisions to be made before the promulgation of regulations. You know, in a number of cities, we're doing, and some have chosen the day and are waiting to see what those rules look like. The cannabis regulatory commission, the state regulatory body that's been charged with developing regulations, since it passed it last week, indicated that they are not going to meet their deadline. We don't have the choices, the city, that's a hard and fasted deadline. It is not uncommon for regulatory bodies to not meet statutory deadlines or, you know, holding events or doing regulations. or, you know, holding events or doing regulations. So I think it's going to take them a while to probably come out in different segments of their rulemaking. To the extent that rulemaking comes out that is in conflict with our ordinance, we have a severability clause in our ordinance. And there's a sort of a preemption kind of concept that would apply here. We couldn't do something that the state doesn't allow. It would be incumbent upon us to modify for purposes of clarity, though, to go back and modify our regulations. If necessary, so it's not in conflict with the state law. Or a mandatory recommendation. But, you know, nothing's going to happen until the state acts, sets up a licensure process and starts to, you know, open up the process to the city. We just don't know when that's going to be yet. But I think we're at least months away. I also have heard that for that growing facility that's going to take quite some time. So the notion of a store being opened and selling cannabis around here in New Jersey, this is going to be a ways off, I think. So there's, you know, I wish I could be more precise and provide greater clarity. There's a lot that's sort of outside of our control right now at the state level. So I think we have to wait and see what the next steps are for the state. In the meantime, if I can stop us from, you know, investigating how this has played out in other states, trying to look at other types of businesses to see if it's appropriate. We're banning it here, but if we found out that manufacturing or growing or whatever could be done here responsibly, reasonably, and consistent with, you know, sort of community desires, we have to look at that. We don't know the answer to those questions. But, you know, we'll continue to do that work while the state is doing its work.
And more, there's one class that nobody can ban. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we could have, you cannot, as a municipality, ban delivery services from entering the municipality. So, I mean, you know, to be real here, there's been sales of marijuana going on in Lambertville for a long time. Those challenges, they've been noted. The driving test and so forth are real and will continue. But the, yeah, whether folks want it or not want it, it is absolutely clear from the state law that there will be delivery services coming into town, committed to come into town to transact the business here.
Thanks, Ward.
Okay, tonight we are introducing the 2021 budget. I want to clarify, this is not the hearing. This is just the introduction. And the hearing will be at the August 19 meeting. And all the documents will be posted on the website tomorrow. So everybody will have a chance to review them, communicate with council members, the mayor, each other with your questions, and come on the 19th to discuss it. So before the introduction, I want to introduce Michael Droulis, our budget consultant, who's been helping us with this process. And would you like to say your words?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, members of council, residents. Three things I love talking about. Family, food, municipal budgets. Won't be as exciting as a previous topic, I assure you, but still very important nonetheless. So I'm going to stay close to my notes because there's numbers and such, so. And thank you. I've been hired by the state of Lambertville to help construct and assemble the budget from introduction through its adoption. By way of background, my professional experience spans possibly 20 years in the public sector, professional public sector. Fifteen years of it have been in local government support. I have a master's degree in public administration and a focus in finance for Refuge University. So these experiences have all taught me that municipal budget is not just about finance. It's a planning document, the guide for engagement of the public. The introduction to the budget is a milestone for a very involved process. It's only part of the way of completion. So we'll take a moment and discuss what you'll find when you examine the documents tomorrow when you download. The budget contains a total expenditure of approximately $6,57,700. It's supported by a levy of $3,278,524. All traditional operations, services, and programs will be fully funded. The 2021 budget will provide the necessary funding to improve city facilities, public safety, and public works. The capital plan includes a new split-body garbage recycling truck that will vastly improve trash recycling pickup and modify current operations for better efficiencies in keeping the city clean. Funding is also provided for our police to continue their vehicle replacement program and reduce the cost of repairing end-of-life vehicles. The budget provides for continuation of ongoing important road projects, including Douglas, Grant, Highland, Swan, and George Streets, and a commitment to the aggressive pothole filling program. Just a few of the highlights. Moving to the revenue. The 2021 budget reflects the start of a financial recovery from the unprecedented COVID-19 impacts. The volatility that threatened once unshakable revenues is starting to subside. While property tax collections were largely unaffected, revenue anticipated from municipal court fines and costs, parking at hotels, occupancies, fees, and uniform fire safety were substantially below the 2019 anticipated amounts. Some revenue losses will be offset by anticipating the full amount of the $198,922.58 of the American Rescue Plan Act budget for 2021. In preparing this budget, it was evident that the speed in which certain recurring revenues regenerate and/or generate surplus is not adequate to meet ongoing expenses. Therefore, this budget calls for the careful use of reserves to provide city financials additional time to recover, meet state mandated caps, and offer some relief to taxpayers. On the appropriation side, the city's operational demands have quickly risen to pre-COVID levels during a time when revenues are recovering much slower. The largest expenditures in the budget for 2021 are payment of debt service, payment for interest on bonds, medical insurance, pension contributions, and solid lease removal. Of these categories, debt payment, pension contribution, medical insurance have the largest increase. These are costs that the city has little ability to change in any short period of time. Once this budget's adopted, the net impact of the budget will raise the average amount of municipal portion of the property tax bill by approximately $206.51 for the average homeowner. Each tax point is worth approximately $80,292.40 or an impact of $49.04 for each $100,000 on the average household. All budget line items were analyzed up to $100 increments and lower. We held administrative budget hearings in person and recorded so the public can witness firsthand what expenses make up the city's budget. If you're not done so, I encourage you to review the postings. They're on the city's website. The recordings, you can hear them firsthand. I want to thank all the city officials who participated, some which are in room with us today. They came and prepared. Spoke into the public record about their operations of their organization very succinctly. All expenditures were reviewed. Purchasing protocols have been sharpened. Apartment operation plans have been reviewed and updated. Current contract vendor relationships and the local agreements have been examined. The budget will reduce salary wages and other expenses to approximately $275,000 below the 2020 budget levels. This is going to help to offset some of the unescapable increases I referenced earlier. The 2021 budget will not fund five vacant positions in City Hall and DPW that have been lost since 2017. The next step of the process is relaying to you, the members of council, the stories and decisions behind these numbers. This is the second and equally important part of the process. On behalf of the mayor, I look forward to engaging with you and the public as you see fit. And I thank you for the consideration of this budget.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to introduce the budget for 2021?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, with me.
Councilwoman Lambert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stegman?
Yes.
Council President, here.
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could just say one thing. We will do the same due diligence that Mike has done and meet with Mike as well. Today was the first day that, today or yesterday were the first days that we got the budget and didn't get a chance to review it. Of course, read the summary of it. So thank you for that. So we will be looking at it as well. And I encourage everybody to look at it as well.
Yes, we will certainly make ourselves available to answer questions, questions that we can't answer. We can fully work with Michael to get responses, so.
Yep.
I just wanted to give folks, before we move on to public comment, a little bit of an update about the Claussen site process. We are moving towards site planning. And the CAT has been doing a lot of work, and I thank their members in the CAT room. So thank you for all of your efforts to come up with a way to collect public input that is responsive to some of the issues that we heard over the winter, that not everybody was able to access electronic surveys, even though they were available in paper format. We do understand there is concern about people having enough opportunity, a variable opportunity to participate in public conversations. So I just want to thank the members of the council who reviewed the plan, provided comments. So just so everybody's aware, details of this will be in the printed version of the Lambertville Matters that's coming out next week, I think.
Within the next 10 days.
Okay, so within the next 10 days, as has been for the past several quarters, you'll get the printed Lambertville Matters, which will have details of public input process that will be open from the beginning of August through probably the end of September. And we'll have many different ways for you to tell the CAT and therefore the city council what it is that you want to see in the open space at the Claussen site. There will be a phone number. People can call in and leave a voicemail. People will be able to text that number and email the CAT. There will be an online form. I don't want to say survey. It's really just a couple of questions to spark thought. It's not the same as a survey. But that form will then be available in paper format at City Hall. You could drop off a paper form at City Hall. So we're really trying to make this available to folks who do not have or do not like to use the internet. And if you know of people, if you have friends or neighbors who have trouble accessing this, you know the process is coming, let us know, let the CAT know. Help them get online. If you can go to their house with a tablet or if you have your phone, whatever it is, email me. I will go to their house personally and help them. We want to make sure that everybody has appropriate input into this process. So we're making ourselves as available as we possibly can to make sure people can talk about this. I'm focusing specifically on the open space because we want to get to a site plan by the end of the year. That's the goal. And we likely will not be able to have real conversations about the uses of the buildings in that timeframe, mostly because, as we've talked about several times, we need to do a real facilities review of all of our existing structures. That process began tonight. We appointed in the consent agenda a consultant and architect firm to do that review. They'll be kicking off immediately. Probably will take about four months to complete. So by then, we're looking into November. So we're open to hearing, and we'll have additional processes later on, everyone's ideas about the buildings. We certainly have heard that many of members of the public who've talked about wanting to have a farm market. So that conversation is ongoing. But just to be very clear, that we, it is, we will not get to a place by the end of this year where we know what's happening with the buildings. So after about September, we will probably be engaging a consultant, a designer, who's able to collate all of the information we've collected, turn that into a few different concept ideas that then can be vetted with the public such that by the end of the year, we have had a really in-depth public conversation about how we want to use this public amenity. Questions or comments on that from council?
Council President, I just want to thank you. We had some conversation about different ways to collect input. I really appreciate your approach to expanding the ways that we're going about to collect that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And thank you for your input. It was a really good conversation among the CAT and council to make sure we could be responsive to the public.
Thank you for your effort in putting this together as well.
My pleasure. Announcements. Quickly, then, we'll move to public comment. The public restrooms in this building have been open since July 1st, starting at 1 PM, I think, right?
That's correct.
Thursday to Sunday, 1 to 8. Convenience center hours for August are Saturday the 7th, Wednesday the 18th, and Saturday the 21st. Hours are in your agendas. And Sparkle Week is coming up in two weeks. All of the dates have been published widely. They're in your agendas. Reminder that if you do have bulk items to be picked up, please get your bulk permits, which are now available online. And with that, I will open it up for public comment on any issues people have.
Mike Mensch, 25 Ferry Street. I have two short subjects. On Claussen, is there anything preventing us from renting the old house while we decide what we can do with the buildings? Two reasons for that. First, a little bit of revenue while we decide. Second, it's better for a real old house to be lived in for electric plumbing, et cetera, as opposed to letting it sit vacant.
The headquarters, the store headquarters. There is not anything preventing us from doing that other than the fact that we, as a body, other than the fact that we, as a body, agreed that we didn't want to spend money on the property until we had a full plan. We don't know yet what it would take to put somebody in that building, so the short answer is no. But I don't know that there's a strong appetite to do that, although your point is well taken, that buildings that are occupied are better cared for than buildings that are not occupied.
And I guess I would say the market as well could be, again, a year or rented out for a season, just putting it out there.
It's worth considering.
Thank you. I may have missed this, but there's a lot of potholes and roadwork. So the LPS parking lot is hazardous. We all see it, we drive by it, we use it, faculty uses it. School year is approaching in a little over a month. Someone's going to get hurt if we don't do some sort of temporary remediation on this parking lot. So I'm asking if it's already, if there is some sort of temporary remediation, I apologize, if there's not, please consider something before somebody breaks an ankle or something worse. It's readily apparent, and it's staring us in the face. And we're doing a lot of things related to pothole repair, but that lot, we've got faculty, parents, kids. There are hunks of metal among the boulders, and it's widely used, so I'm just putting it out there for your consideration, thank you.
The city doesn't own that parking lot.
It does, the superintendent's own.
The parking lot in front of the pothole, we do own, and it is on the plan to be done before September.
It is.
We have to keep it gravelled.
Right.
But-
I understood that, so I didn't know, thank you, so, okay, before, okay, thank you.
I'm looking to trip like the parking lot right here. Judy Lee's 86 North Union Street. I just had one question about one of the resolutions that you already passed, which was, I think, 108 Facilities Review, $39,623. Is that the facilities review where somebody is looking at all of our city buildings to see what is the problem or what it would take to bring them up to good health or code? Or is that something different?
Yes, as you described.
It's the first guess?
Yes.
Haven't we been trying to get this going for like a year? I'm just trying to place this in time of why we're only just now? Are we only just now starting the process? We've now picked the person, and this is the money, and they will start. When will they start?
They should be, I mean, we'll have kickoff meetings with them as soon as possible, so they'll be starting, let's say, August.
Do we know what the end date is on that, when we will get a report?
About November, it should be about four months until they're complete. Thank you. Any other comments?
Christopher, 43 Bridge Street. What is the convenience center? Thank you. What is the convenience center?
Convenience center is, yeah, but-
Convenience center is Public Works. And that's, you know, a couple of years ago, they went, the state and the county changed all of the names. So it's a convenience center because you can drop off brush and leaves at certain days of the week.
Thank you.
Hi, Janine McGregor, 161 Swan Street. I'm not a numbers person, I'm not really used to the budget documents, but I do want to take a look tomorrow. But one thing I would request, I don't know if this is possible, is that there's some kind of comparison either to last year's numbers or a summary which the financial contractor provided about the major changes. Because it's, you know, to have no context with the document, it's very difficult. So if there's any way you can do that. And the reason I'm asking is because, and it leads me to my second point, which is, I feel that, I think I heard correctly, that you're going to not be hiring back some DPW workers? Is that correct? Said something about, that's super disturbing right now.
Can I answer?
Yes, please.
That's really disturbing.
So if I can clarify?
Yeah.
Those are positions that in previous years were not replaced as people left. And they're going to be left not replaced. So the current employee headcount's not going to change.
Okay, so the total funded FTE, whatever, is not changing from last year?
The same headcount as last year, just every year we revisit, whether we open those positions up again-
So they're historically unfunded?
Correct.
Okay. Not that I think that's great, because I do, my second point really is really what's going on in town and how it looks. It's a mess. Public property that the city owns, walking down Swan Street today, I was like overcome by the weeds, half of them are poison ivy on the street. You have to walk on the street. I live by Little Haven Rest Home, have people from the residents walking in the middle of Swan Street at night. Someday, one of these guys are going to get hit. It's really bad, I think, in terms of the public property. And then I don't even know how to bring up the private property, boarded up houses, houses with wood on them, foundations that have been sitting there for years. I just really wish we could do something about this. I don't know if the budget is going to address these kind of things, but there, I really feel that there has to be some way to incentivize getting these people to make their properties look halfway decent. You know, I'm not like gentrification here, pushing that, but I mean, really, when you have properties that are boarded up at the bottom of your street, you've got to look at that every day you're going up the hill. It's really not nice.
If I could comment? Yeah, I live up the street, so I can just see walking up and down, or riding up and down the street. That house on the corner is currently being sold by Fannie Mae, so it's on the market.
Okay.
So at least there's movement from that. The other property up the street that has the retaining wall that you can still see, that property's been on the market at least for eight years to try to sell it, since the original owner and builder decided not to do it.
You can hardly see the foundation anymore, it's so overgrown, sorry.
Yeah, well-
In the fall you can, where the leaves are down, and the people on the other side of the street certainly-
Yeah, and I'm sure it's visible from the other side of the hill as well.
I just mean, has anyone brought in Mr. Denny to talk to him about it? To say, hey, what can you do here?
I don't believe he's alive.
I'm sorry?
I did, I don't think he's alive, is he?
Not the father, but this son who, he just-
Didn't his daughter go into practice with him?
Yeah, I don't know, but-
I remember seeing a billboard on 202.
Me too.
But just so you know, we do have a vacant land registration so that, and that's what we use to, and that's why the building's boarded up. Because if you have vacant property, you know what's living in it, people can go into it, kids will go into it, you know? So it's more safe to have it boarded up. And every year they have to register, and it starts at 500, then it goes to 1,000, and then it goes to $3,000 that they have to pay.
So disincentive, so you'd want to sell?
Yes, so that's why we put pressure on them. For 85 Swan, I think we have about six properties that currently are vacant. The problem is, when's a property's vacant? You have to go through a certain system before you declare it vacant.
Okay.
So it might sit vacant for six, seven months. And while you apply pressure, and then finally they'll start registering. And once they start paying those fees, they start marketing it.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
There's also another state enabling legislation that I don't believe we have on our books about the Abandoned Properties Rehabilitation Act, which allows municipalities to, the definition of abandoned has lots of different statutory pieces of it. It's not just, oh, there's nobody in it. Properties could be abandoned because of the exterior condition, failure to pay taxes. And that is something that I would like to bring forward, so we get it on the books, and then it allows municipalities all sorts of different tools to take action against the properties much more quickly, including spotlight eminent domain, which means we could take it for being abandoned and then redevelop or sell it or whatever. So this is more often used in places like Trenton, Camden, Newark, but it's equally relevant here.
Okay, I'm glad to hear there's some going on.
And we've had several houses that were vacated, and it just took, in the city, there was one on North Union Street, there was one on Coriel Street, you know, the neighborhoods and the streets, you didn't think that happened, but it happened all over the city because people get a financial problem, so.
That's what I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to push people on account or anything, but-
Yeah, so-
But in Trenton, you know, they paint the wooden, they paint the wooden windows like the curtains on, and we should have an artist do that.
I'd just like to say, you bring up another great point, which I think, you know, you talked about the residents of Little Haven, and as someone who's lived on the hill a few decades, it is a miracle that someone has not been hit. I think there's an issue of just general pedestrian access to Cottage Hill, which I think maybe we should put it on our to-do list to have something to look at that.
Yeah, the walkway, my husband calls it Janine's sidewalk, because I did complain for a long time about that, and they did pave it. It's now an issue.
It's kind of bad. Sorry, we're past three minutes, I want to-
Sorry, yeah.
Well, my fault, I asked-
Well, we went on and back and forth, but yeah.
Thank you. Council President, may I answer one more of her questions just yesterday? Just so that you have context tomorrow when you're looking at the budget. As you move through the documents, you're going to see on the revenue side, the 2021 anticipated, that's going to tell you what was anticipated in 2020, and then it's going to tell you what cash was received in 2020.
Okay.
As you go into appropriations, it'll tell you what was budgeted in 2020, what's budgeted in 2021, what happened in 2020, and what the expenditure was.
Okay, so like planned and actuals for then, and then planned for-
And the document is a state document, so if you pull down 2020s, 2019-
That's great.
All the numbers there.
Thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none, we will adjourn. Can I get a motion to try to close the public comment? No, just needed. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Aye.
Good night. Thank you, Ward, I'm going to plug you now.